Good evening. Welcome to the Pullman City Council Meeting for this Tuesday, March 29th. It's nice to see all of you here tonight. It's always great when we have these awards from the American Legion. We basically have a full audience. We also feel a lot safer tonight. I just want to make sure you all knew that. So with that, Dee, would you please take role?
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Benjamin.
Present.
Councilmember Dubin.
Here.
Councilmember Guido.
Here.
Councilmember McCall.
Here.
Councilmember Parks.
Here.
Councilmember Weller.
Present.
Councilmember Wright.
Pat Wright notified us that she could not be here tonight. Do I hear a motion to excuse?
So move.
Second.
Move and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That are announcements tonight. I have a number of them. Volunteers helping with tax preparation will be ending their free service at Neil Public Library this Saturday, April 2nd. They're working the library from noon to four every day. Great service, and they're all IRS certified. Street sweeping is currently underway on Sunnyside Hill. If the sweeper hasn't come by your place yet, make sure your sidewalks are swept with a rock and get it out on the street. One of our sweepers is currently in the ICU, and we're down one sweeper, and we're looking possibly for a rental to help out. So they're getting the job done just a little bit slower than they wanted to get it done. For the 25th year in a row, Pullman was honored as Tree City USA, all part of the Arbor Day Foundation. And the State Transportation Improvement Board met in Vancouver last Thursday and Friday. I serve as vice chair of that. The good news is Pullman received the Complete Streets Award, and I'd like to present the award tonight to our Public Works Director, Sean Colts. And with that comes a $750,000 award, which is not bad. Let me... It also shows the denominator as well. So Sean, I turn this over to you.
Oh, that's great.
I delivered it safely. Okay. But I'd like Sean to explain what we're using this $100,000.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this is an exciting opportunity for us because to get this grant, we had to have a complete streets policy in place, which we established in 2020. So this is where, this was our first attempt at the grant. And basically, what a complete streets policy says is that we are committed to building a transportation network that serves all of our users, you know, not just vehicles, but also pedestrians and bicyclists. So we've got two projects that we're pushing this $750,000 to. One of them is on Terra View Drive. It's on the south side of Terra View Drive from the roundabout intersection that's going to go in this summer on North Fairway to Merman. And right now, there's literally no sidewalk, no shared use path on the south side of that road. We're going to be completing that connection. It's been a missing connection for a long time and really connect our bike and pedestrian pathway through there. So that's one of the projects we're going to be able to get done with this money. The second project is an extension of the Lincoln Middle School Shared Use Path. It was just extended across the street, actually. So coming up crest to you from Bishop to that Shared Use Path connection, we'll be able to build a shared use path where we've just got a sidewalk now, and we can get the cyclists off the road on that connection. So great projects. We're excited to get this money. We haven't had it before, so it's a great opportunity for us. And thank you, Mayor, for your work on the TIP.
Thank you. Couple of weeks ago, the Pullman Police Department received a letter from the Chief of Police of the Los Angeles Police Department, Michael Moore, commending our Pullman Police Department and our number of officers, along with officers from Whitman County Sheriff's Department and Washington State University, for their work in apprehending a suspect who was wanted for homicide in Los Angeles. And they commended the police department and the Whitman County SWAT team exercised a search warrant for the apartment of Francisco Reel of Long Beach, who was wanted for one count of homicide. And in that letter, they commended the work of our police chief, Gary Jenkins, along with Patrol Commander Jake Opken North, Sergeant Aaron Breschere, Detective Michael Sonagraff, Officer Brianna Banks, along with Officer Ruben Harris, Sergeant Alex Gordon, Ryan McNanny, Detective Josh Bray, Detective TJ Cornish, Officer Love St. Andre, Officer Garrett Willis, Officer Kayla Noxal, Officer Holden Humphrey, Reserve Officer Jeff Gordon. And I just wanted to make sure that people knew that our police department received this commendation from the Los Angeles Police Department, which is, I think, the second largest police department in our country, following New York. I think New York has over 35,000 and more than the population of Pullman as police officers there. And also, you probably followed the noise, the story that our Pullman Police Department managed to solve a cold case that went back, was it 2004? And that suspect is currently in the Whitman County Jail. So really want to commend our police department and our public servants for the great work you've been doing. With that, tonight, we get to honor our police and firefighters with the American Legion Award. And I'm going to introduce to you Commander Jerry Corker, Adjutant Ted Weatherly. Some of you remember Ted Weatherly as our former police chief, who's there with the American Legion. They have a number of awards to present tonight. And again, it's always a pleasure to have the American Legion here. We've had a number of our award winners from here that actually won state awards. So Commander Corker and Weatherly, the floor is yours.
Okay. Mayor Johnson and City Council members, it is an honor to be here tonight to present American Legion Maynard Prize Post 52 Law and Order Awards. Our American Legion post is composed of wartime military veterans who honorably served this nation during World War I and from December 7th, 1941 until the present, and are committed to mentoring youth and sponsoring wholesome programs in our community, advocating patriotism and honor, promoting strong national security, and continued devotion to our fellow service members and veterans. And before we start, I want to apologize to our honorees if I mispronounce your name, because this old country boy stutters sometimes. The first award being presented tonight is the 911 Operator of the Year. The criteria for this award is that the candidate be a full-time paid 911 operator selected from a public or private agency that is responsible for receiving 911 calls and dispatching fire, medical, or law enforcement services. The selected nominee may be either a call receiving or a dispatcher. Tonight, the award is presented to Whitcom 911 Supervisor Jamie Keller. Supervisor Keller, please come forward. Wendy Barrett, Whitcom Executive Director forwarded this nomination for this award and stated, "Jamie Keller began her career at Whitcom 911 in February 2005. She learned the job faster than what is typical for a new dispatch trainee. Jamie continued to exceed expectations and became a trainer and was promoted to supervisor in 2008. Jamie is a dispatcher, supervisor, and coworker who is well-liked and respected by her peers, first responders, and the public. Jamie can always be counted on to go the extra mile and assist with whatever is needed. She is an extremely knowledgeable and talented dispatcher and is regularly turned to by other dispatchers when they have a question or need help. In addition to being an explanatory dispatcher, Jamie has also worked an average of 50 hours per week for the past year. She completed a multitude of daily, weekly, and monthly duties on time and error-free. Some highlighted duties include training new dispatcher trainees, scheduling, coordination, and reviewing and certifying all dispatcher supervisor timesheets. She ensures paid deadlines are met so dispatchers get paid on time. She also reviews and provides feedback on all training documentation from Whitcom trainees and trainers. Jamie regularly works in addition to her schedule to help coverage when someone calls out sick, or she will offer to cover shifts so other employees can take their vacation. Some weeks, Jamie will work afternoon shifts and switch to night shift or day shift, other weeks to help where coverage is needed. Additionally, Jamie has been a volunteer with Colfax Ambulance and Whitman County Fire District 11 since she was a teenager. Her knowledge of Whitman County and life experiences had made her an invaluable resource to her coworkers, citizens, and responders. During the Wildland Fire Storms of September 2020 and July 2021, Jamie was front and center dispatching 12 to 14 hours per day to assist the firefighters in the field, as well as handling the routine calls that continue to come in to Whitcom. Jamie made handling multitudes, fire frequencies, and coordinating appearances with incident commanders appear effortlessly. Mutual aid from many fire districts was needed, and Jamie knew each agency operated and helped bring some calm to the chaos. There were more fire units out on dispatch screen than we could remember in over 15 years. Watching Jamie work during the fire events, as well as a multitude of busy events throughout the year, WSU home football games, catastrophic weather events, and multi-agency traffic emphasis patrols, et cetera, is always impressive. Jamie's service and dedication to emergency service is admirable. It is difficult to pinpoint just one or two calls for Jamie when above and beyond because she does that every day, every shift. She is a true first responder, and if Whitcom is extremely lucky to have her. It is my honor to nominate Jamie Keller as Dispatcher of the Year. On behalf of the American Legion Maynard Prize Post 52, it is my honor to present to Whitcom Supervisor Jamie Keller a certificate acknowledging the American Legion 911 Operator of the Year. The next award being presented tonight is the Paramedic Emergency Medical Technician of the Year Award. The Paramedic Emergency Medical Technician of the Year Award is restricted to certified firefighters who reside and are assigned within the state of Washington, and the recognition must have been for action within the city of Pullman. Tonight, this award is presented to Reserve Firefighter Nate Richardson. Reserve Firefighter Richardson, please come forward. Pullman Fire Chief Mike Heston forwarded this nomination for this award and stated, "Pullman Fire would like to nominate Reserve Firefighter Nate Richardson for EMT of the Year for 2021 for his quick and extraordinary action on September 18th, 2021, at the WSU versus USC football game. Firefighter Richardson was working with the assigned medical team in the student section of Barton Stadium. On that day, Nate turned down to sitting with his parents in the stands due to some last-minute scheduling changes. While standing at his post during the game, he noticed an individual quickly walking toward his team in distress. Nate quickly recognized that something was wrong. She had a hot dog in her hand, and she was trying to speak. Nate could see that her face and eyes were sending a dire message, and he asked if she was choking. She nodded her head yes. He asked if she could talk or breathe. She indicated she couldn't, which meant that she had a complete airway blockage. Without any delay, Nate spun the choking patient around and immediately started to perform the Heimlich maneuver. After several thrusts, two large chunks of chewed hot dog and bun fell to the ground, clearing the patient's airway. Firefighter Richardson recognized the problem before anyone else in his team and didn't hesitate to act. He didn't look to the paramedics who were standing next to him for guidance or to take over. He was just, he just reacted. Nate's dedication and professionalism as a EMT exemplified the mission of the Pullman Fire Department. On that day, firefighter Richardson clearly made a difference. On behalf of the American Legion Maynard Prize Post 52, it is my honor to present to Reserve Firefighter Nate Richardson a certificate acknowledging the American Legion Paramedic Emergency Medical Technician of the Year Award." The next award being presented tonight is the Firefighter of the Year Award, which is restricted to a member of local county or state fire departments. Our post requires that the firefighter actions must have occurred in or been involved in the behalf of the city of Pullman. Tonight, that award is presented to firefighter/paramedic Stephen Potras Lee. Firefighter/paramedic Stephen Potras Lee, please come forward. Pullman Fire Chief Mike Heston forwarded this nomination for this award. Pullman Fire Department would like to nominate firefighter/paramedic Stephen Potras Lee as the 2020 Firefighter of the Year for his work as coordinating the Reserve Firefighter Academy. The Pullman Fire Department conducts a Reserve Firefighter Academy each year with new recruits. The academy has traditionally been coordinated by the department's training officer. In 2021, the department chose to further develop the leadership skills of the acting officers by signing this academic program to one of them. Firefighter Potras Lee, being one of four acting officers, was selected through a competitive interview process to coordinate his 2021 Reserve Academy. Firefighter Potras Lee hit the ground running day one in coordinating his first recruit academy. With minimal guidance and direction, he successfully selected his adjunct instructors, organized the classroom equipment, and testing evaluation. Stephen has committed numerous hours while instructing, performing administrative duties, and developing leadership among the recruits during his tenure as a recruit training officer. His commitment to ensuring the success of the recruit is unwavering. The members of the recruit class have excelled under Stephen's leadership, and he has raised the performance for future classes. The coordination of the academy has elevated Stephen's management and leadership skills with both personally and professionally. Firefighter Potras Lee's dedication and professionalism illustrates the mission of the Pullman Fire Department and has definitely made a difference in developing future firefighters. On behalf of American Legion Maynard Prize Post 52, it is my honor to present to firefighter/paramedic Stephen Potras Lee a certificate acknowledging the American Legion Firefighter of the Year Award. The next awards being presented tonight are the Humanitarian and Life Saving Awards, which are restricted to public safety personnel, but may be given to any member of the community who has either, who has either performed an act that resulted in the saving of a life or who has performed an act that is considered humanitarian in nature. The first award presented is to Pullman Police Officer Brian Chamberlain. Officer Chamberlain, please come forward. Pullman Police Chief Gary Jenkins forwarded nomination for this award and stated, "On December 21, 2021, Pullman officers responded to the bridge at the Terra View Drive in Grand Avenue following a report of a subject with a rope around his neck who appeared to be preparing to jump from the bridge. Upon arrival, Officer Chamberlain observed a citizen talking with the subject. Suddenly, the subject jumped over the railing. Officer Chamberlain could see that the rope around the subject's neck was tied to the bridge. The citizen grabbed a hold of the subject and appeared that both were going to fall over the rail. Officer Chamberlain immediately ran to the location, grabbed and pulled them to safety. The subject was uncooperative and combative, punching Officer Chamberlain in the head. Officer Chamberlain was ultimately able to restrain the subject, who was subsequently transported to the hospital for evaluation. The quick action of Officer Chamberlain saved the lives of both the citizen and the suicidal subject. I therefore nominate Officer Brian Chamberlain for the Humanitarian and Life Saving Award. On behalf of the American Legion Maynard Prize Post 52, it is my honor to present to Officer Brian Chamberlain a certificate acknowledging the American Legion Humanitarian and Life Saving Award." The next Humanitarian and Life Saving Award is presented to Sergeant Todd Dow, Officers Shane Emerson, Ruben Harris, Love St. Andre, and Garrett Willis. Would all of you please come forward? Pullman Police Chief Gary Jenkins forwarded nomination for this award and stated, "On September 25, 2021, at 12:29 a.m., Pullman officers were responding to a noise complaint at a resident on College Hill when they heard what sounded like approximately 15 nearby gunshots fired in rapid succession. Officers rapidly responded to the scene where they located a victim who had been shot several times shortly after another gunshot victim was located nearby. Sergeant Dow and Officers Emerson, Harris, St. Andre, and Willis provided first aid to the shooting victims who had both sustained life-threatening wounds. The officers utilized their skill and fervently worked to try to save the lives of both injured parties. One of the shooting victims later died at the hospital as a result of multiple gunshot wounds. The other victim survived, although one of the victims did not survive his injuries. It was not due to lack of effort and first aid skill on behalf of the officers. The surviving victim had his life saved as a direct result of officer action. I therefore nominate Sergeant Todd Dow and Officers Shane Emerson, Ruben Harris, Love St. Andre, and Garrett Willis for the Humanitarian and Life Saving Award. On behalf of the American Legion Maynard Prize Post 52, it is my honor to present to the sergeant and these four officers each a certificate acknowledging the American Legion Humanitarian and Life Saving Award." The next Humanitarian and Life Saving Award is presented to Officer Brock Westerman. Officer Westerman, please come forward. Pullman Police Chief Gary Jenkins forwarded nomination for this award and stated, "On July 4, 2021, at approximately 11 p.m., Pullman officers responded to a traumatic injury on the 300 block of Northwest Thomas Street. Officer Westerman assumed care of a 25-year-old male who had seriously damaged to his right leg from a mortar tube exploding against it. Officer Westerman applied a tourniquet to the patient's leg, which saved him from bleeding to death. The action of Officer Westerman saved the patient's life. I hereby nominate Officer Brock Westerman for the Humanitarian and Life Saving Award. On behalf of the American Legion Maynard Prize Post 52, it is my honor to present to Officer Westerman a certificate acknowledging the American Legion Humanitarian and Life Saving Award." Outstanding Law Enforcement Officer of the Year Award, which is restricted to a member of local county or state law enforcement agencies. Our post requires that the officer's action must have occurred in or been involved in the behalf of the city of Pullman. The Pullman's police criteria for this award is that an officer's work during the past year has been exemplified excellent in the law enforcement contributions to the police department and the community. Tonight, that award is being presented to Pullman Police Officer Garrett Willis. Officer Willis, please come forward. Pullman Police Chief Gary Jenkins forwarded this nomination for this award and stated, "After recognizing a weakness in our traumatic first aid readiness, Officer Garrett Willis took the initiative to propose and prepare go-bags containing extra medical and tactical equipment in each of our patrol cars. He has also been a tactical medicine advocate. Garrett ensures that all of the first aid kits in patrol vehicles were ready and provided in advanced first aid training on tourniquets, chest seals, and wound packing. This was a level of care we had never before been able to provide on a departmental level. The equipment and training we received as a result of this initiative have already been put to use in life-saving events. Last spring, when we were recruiting a volunteer for the College Hill assignment, Officer Willis stepped up when no one else volunteered. He recognized the need of the department. Officer Willis embraced the opportunity to rebuild relationships that had been difficult to maintain during the pandemic. Garrett has excelled in the role of College Hill officer, where he is consistently searching for new ways to contact with the College Hill community, in addition to his regular nighttime foot patrols. Officer Willis encourages our newer officers to walk with him, offering opportunity for them to polish their community policing skills. Garrett identified several more outreach opportunities designed to engage on even broader portions of the College Hill community, which he readied for the implementation last semester. He has been one outstanding representative of Pullman Police Department in his College Hill office role, while also balancing his SWAT and patrol tactic instructor duties. Officer Willis' work has been contributed significantly to the success... to the success, competence, and reputation of the Pullman Police Department. I hereby nominate Officer Garrett Willis for the 2021 Officer of the Year. On behalf of the American Legion Medal of Price Post 52, it is my honor to present to Officer Willis a certificate acknowledging the 2021 Outstanding Law Officer of the Year Award. In addition, his name has been inscribed on a plaque that is displayed at the Pullman Police Department." The final presentation tonight will be the Medal of Valor. The Medal of Valor is not restricted to public service personnel, safety personnel, but may be awarded to any person who has distinguished themselves conspicuously by the actions that involve a serious risk to personal welfare and safety wherein there is an act of heroism performed at the risk of serious injury. Eligibility for the Medal of Valor requires that the act of valor occur in the city of Pullman. Tonight, the American Legion Medal of Honor will be awarded to Officers Ruben Harris and Officers Love St. Andre. Would Officers Harris and St. Andre please come forward? Pullman Police Chief Gary Jenkins forwarded the nomination for this award and stated, "At approximately 12:29 a.m. on September 25, 2021, Officers Ruben Harris and Love St. Andre were responding to a noise complaint at a resident on College Hill when they heard what sounded like 15 nearby gunshots fired in rapid succession. Both officers immediately headed to the direction of the gunshots. They located a shooting victim and began to render first aid. Another shooting victim was subsequently located nearby. Police officers sometimes find themselves in a position that requires them to place themselves in personal danger in order to address imminent threats at public safety. Sometimes this means moving toward the sound of gunfire while others flee. Officers Harris and St. Andre demonstrated their willingness to act according to circumstances and the needs of their community, placing the safety and well-being of the innocent public above their own personal safety. I therefore nominate Officers Harris and St. Andre for the Medal of Valor Award. On behalf of the American Legion Medal of Price Post 52, it is my honor to award Officer Harris and Officer St. Andre the American Legion Medal of Valor and a certificate acknowledging the award." In closing, we encourage any citizen or public safety official to contact our American Legion post at Post Office Box 24 in Pullman, 99163. Any American Legion member or the Pullman Police or Fire Department with nominations this year, that's 2022. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commander Najin. Congratulations to all the award winners. Again, we are so grateful for your service to the city of Pullman. Very proud of you, and I know Ted, in the past, this also now goes to the state. They take a look at these nominations too.
Yes, and one of the recipients tonight is going to be awarded at the conference. Officer Brian Chamberlain was announced to represent that award at the state convention. He'll be provided a certificate from the state American Legion.
Very good, thank you, and again, congratulations. And thank you again, American Legion. Our next item on the agenda tonight is we'll be hearing from Sam Jenkins, our GIS administrator, dealing with the City of Pullman Council Ward redistricting and the Spring Board for that. So, Sam, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council. This workshop, presentation first, and then workshop, is intended to begin the city process of redistricting for the city council wards. In September last year, council asked us to engage a consultant to help us begin this process. The consultant will bring in tools and expertise and a sense of independence. And so, I'll introduce in a minute Kent Martin, Emma Swanson, and Alex Brash from Flow Analytics, who will make the presentation and guide the workshop, the goal of which is for city council to be able to produce three or four draft city ward maps that will be available for public comment and then move on with the rest of the process that consultants at Flow Analytics will now define.
So everyone just doesn't look at each other? I guess you're going to introduce them or they're taking off? They're going to start?
I think, yeah, I think they're going to start, yep, thank you.
Yeah, well, good evening, thank you for that. Mr. Jenkins, good evening, Mayor Johnson and city council members. I am Kent Martin with Flow Analytics, and we have been hired as consultants for this redistricting process for the city. As Mr. Jenkins stated, this is a workshop tonight. We need to get some information from you in order to create some draft maps. And so, I'm going to introduce the team that's here today for this presentation tonight. So, I'm actually based in Spokane, Washington, just a little bit south, about 55 miles north of you guys. But we're kind of all over the country. We have Alex Brash, who's a senior analyst and lead population geographer for us. He's out of Portland. And then also tonight, you'll hear from Emma Swanson, who worked on the Spring Board maps and will be presenting those. Emma's a project data analyst at Flow, and she's based in Houston, Texas. So it's getting a little late out there tonight. I want to talk just a little bit about Flow and give you a little bit of information about us. So, our parent company is Mall Foster Alangi, and it's headquartered in Vancouver, Washington. We also have offices in Portland, we have an office in Boston. Our focus is really on GIS and data analytics. And our primary clients are local government as well as school districts. And we primarily work in the Pacific Northwest, but we do have clients all across the nation. Now, we started this electoral redistricting process at the request of our existing clients. We've always assisted school districts with redistricting attendance area boundaries, but expanded to electoral redistricting due to the requirements triggered by the release of the 2020 census. We do this work because we want to provide impartial, technically sound services to our clients. We don't work for political parties, and it's our goal to ensure redistricting plans are fair and representative of an entity's entire electorate and that they withstand any legal challenges. So, we'll be working towards those ends. Why redistricting? Well, Washington law does govern this, and this is right from the RCW 29A-76010, and it's the responsibility of each county municipal corporation and special purpose district with a governing body comprised of internal director, council, or commissioner districts, not based on statutorily required land ownership criteria, to periodically redistrict its governmental unit, in this case wards, based on population information from the most recent federal decennial census. So, we read this and we go through some of these redistricting processes with you ahead of time, just so that we're all on the same page, and you'll see really what we're working towards and what guidelines we need to follow in this process. Our next slide shows a timeline, and we've been working with the city team, led by Mr. Jenkins, for almost two months now. And we've been working to understand Pullman a little bit in terms of the geographies and the existing wards. We've overlaid the census data from 2020 onto the wards, and we'll be sharing that information with the council tonight. As you see, tonight's a workshop. We're going to be bringing forward some spring board proposals to you. And again, these aren't meant to be draft maps. They could become draft maps, some of them might be, but that's really your choice as a city council. But we're also here to do some real-time modeling. If you'd like to see some adjustments to those initial spring boards tonight, and/or if you have ideas of a different map you'd like to see, we can model those for you tonight to hopefully get us down the road of you determining some draft maps, which we would then present in late April at another city council meeting, which at that time would also be a public hearing. According to state law, there needs to be at least one public hearing for redistricting processes in Washington. And then you can see from that draft map, we would take input from the public and ask that the council work to develop a final map, which we would then publish in mid-May, and then come to the council for adoption in late May. Now, one thing that happens sometimes in these processes is that is that there may be a bit of an issue. Actually, let's stay on the timeline, Alex, if we can. And there may be a little bit of an issue in terms of getting some data that you may need to amend the map. And so, there has to be at least a public hearing within 10 days of publishing that draft plan. So as you see on here, we have April 16 listed as when we would actually show what the council has decided for draft maps to the public. And then there has to be a public hearing within 10 days. So we put that as the 26. The law also says that the electoral boards cannot make a decision on a final map until at least seven days after the first publication of the draft maps. So you can see, that's why we're trying to take some time with this, to allow input from the public, and also to make sure that any amendments moving forward can be captured by the council. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Alex Brash, who's going to talk about the processes that we need to follow and what's outlined in the law for redistricting. And then he'll be leading into the Spring Board reveals from Emma in a little bit.
Thanks, Ken. Good evening, everyone. As Kent mentioned, my name's Alex Brash. I'm a senior population geographer and data analyst with Flow. And I'm going to step us through a few slides on the redistricting criteria. And I'm going to start here with the same Washington RCW that Kent mentioned, and look at the highlighted areas here, and see that we have about five to seven criteria to follow. And the first of which being that each ward is as nearly equal in population as possible. And that's going to be based on the 2020 decennial census. Couple geographically inclined criteria are compactness of wards and that each ward is a contiguous area. And then, we need to make sure that when we're drawing boundaries, that the population data is not used for the purpose of favoring or disfavoring any racial group or political party. And lastly, to the extent possible, we're going to use existing recognized natural boundaries and administrative boundaries, as well as try to preserve existing communities of related and mutual interest, which I will discuss in a bit more detail in a few slides. So concerning the chief criteria of equal population, specifically, what we're talking about is total population, and not the number of registered voters or the citizen voting age population, which is often referred to as CVAP. Because Washington law states that each internal district, council, or commissioner district shall be as nearly equal in population as possible to each and every other district. And that is because the wards reflect that the city council members represent all residents and not just those eligible to vote. So the measure of total population equality, and the metric we'll be looking at is called overall deviation, sometimes also referred to as overall range or total deviation. And that's from an ideal population, which is simply the total population of the city divided by the number of wards. And the overall range is calculated as the sum of the deviations of the most and least populated districts. And over a series of court cases, it's become accepted that a redistricting plan is constitutionally suspect if the overall range is greater than 10%. So generally, we're going to strive for that overall deviation to be as near to 0% as possible. So, a community of interest is a population that shares common social and economic interests that should be included within a single district or ward for the purposes of effective and fair representation. And there aren't any concrete rules on how to define a community of interest. But that's where the public input becomes extremely important. We want to hear from the citizens of Pullman to understand where these communities of interest are within the city. And then, once we have that information, to the extent possible, the redistricting plan shall preserve those communities of interest in a single ward, if possible. I want to talk a little bit about race ethnicity. If you've heard any of the national conversation about redistricting, you may have heard that the 14th Amendment prohibits the use of race ethnicity to draw district boundaries. But on the flip side, the Voting Rights Act requires consideration of race ethnicity data to avoid voter dilution. So, to begin this process, Flow looked at information from the decennial census and the Census Bureau's American Community Survey, which provides the citizen voting age population I mentioned earlier. And we looked at race ethnicity data to see if there's a potential for a minority to represent 50% or more of a ward and form a cohesive voting block, 50% or more. And if that would happen to exist, then the city would want to consult legal counsel and have them decide if there's a potential to draw what's called a majority-minority district. And if one of those could be drawn without compromising other criteria in the RCW, then there's a valid Voting Rights Act liability. Looking at the demographics of Pullman from the decennial census and the American Community Survey, Pullman is roughly 80% white alone, and there's no racial or ethnic minority large enough to represent a majority in a single ward. And we're going to see a few more stats on that, based on the existing ward boundaries in a few slides. Concerning some of the geographic criteria, one of them is that each of the wards must be contiguous. That simply means that there's no disconnected wards, no small pieces detached from the main portion of a ward. Second is compactness. If you've heard anything about gerrymandering, compactness is often kind of that quintessential example because we don't want to see these long, sinuous, and odd-shaped districts. There are a lot of mathematical measures of compactness. And we can produce those and do produce those to assess compactness. But oftentimes, it's just kind of a look, a visual aspect to it because what we're trying not to do is bypass nearby districts and reach out to get farther afield populations. So we just want to keep those as geographically concise as possible. And then lastly, just pointing out again that, to the extent possible, we will use existing administrative, political, or natural boundaries, such as major arterial roads and rivers, political divisions, to help us draw the boundaries. So, the population data that is enumerated by the Census Bureau for the 2020 census can be reflected in many different levels of geography. And the smallest geographic unit of these is the census block. And that means that a census block cannot be split because the Census Bureau doesn't certify enumerations for smaller geographies. certify enumerations for smaller geographies. So these blocks are statistical areas bounded by visible features such as streets, roads, streams, railroad tracks, as well as non-visible boundaries like selected property lines. And generally, census blocks are small in area. For example, in a city block bounded by streets on all sides. But census blocks in suburban and rural areas may be large, irregular in shape, bounded by a variety of features such as roads, streams, transmission lines. And then in very remote areas, it could, a census block could encompass hundreds of square miles. So census blocks then nest within other tabulated census entities such as block groups and tracks. And all this is to say is we will be using census blocks as our literal building blocks to form ward boundaries. And with that, I'm going to pass over to Emma Swanson. She's going to talk a bit about the existing wards.
Thanks, Alex. Can y'all hear me? Okay, good. Okay, so yeah, I'm going to talk about the populations within the wards and then as a whole, what the city looks like. So where we are right now, as Alex mentioned before, the ideal population calculation, the city comes out to 10,967 for this year's 2020s, or you know, a couple of years ago, 2020 census is what feeds into that and informs that population. So the ideal population is determined. And then the overall deviation, what the city is sitting at right now, is 23.3%. So it's pretty uneven. The population is pretty uneven between the wards and that is due to maybe some wards growing quicker than others, or maybe not quicker, but growing larger across the 10 years between 2010 and 2020 census, and then other wards not growing to that scale. But I do think that every ward grew in population in the last 10 years. And you'll see in the total population and deviation per ward table, the over/under ideal is showing by how much is that ward over the ideal population. And Ward 1 is the largest right now, sitting at 12.9%. And Ward 3 is the lowest, sitting at negative 0.4%. So those parentheses are negative. So really, what we want to do is try and balance Ward 1 and Ward 3. And the way to do that without pulling too much, we'll get into where the population lays, but those wards do touch each other, so that is helpful. It's a little easier to balance the population rather than having to change a bunch of other geographies just to grab more population. So that's working in our favor. So these are the stats of where we're at right now. And then if you go to the next slide. Okay, so again, this is the existing geographies of the wards right now. And we have the census blocks outlined in blue, or purply-blue, over top of the wards. So you can kind of see the geography and how when we talk about pulling different census blocks into other wards to balance that population out, they can look pretty funny just based on census block geographies. So we do want to be as compact as possible and we do want to make each ward look nice visually. But sometimes that's hard to do just because of census blocks. So this will give you more of an idea, this map here. And again, it's during the same data we saw on the last slide, just adding the visual So next slide. Okay, yeah, this is, so Alex was talking about CVAP earlier, and this is the current breakdown, citizen voting age population percentages for each of the wards. And as we can see, none, the city is majority white by so much that it's not going to be possible to make a minority-majority ward in this situation. So we're just outlining, or showing the statistics per race ethnicity breakdown. Okay, let's see. So I did go over this top part of the current reality and where we're at right now. We need to balance between wards 1 and 3 the most and try and get the overall population deviation is sitting at 23.3%. And we want to get that down to definitely below 10% as we're seeding in the first bullet point under the redistricting goals. Under 10% is a standard goal and by law. But of course, we really want to get to 3% or less because that just sets the city up for success later on. If there is uneven growth, at least you're starting at a really even point. Because we can't project a lot, we can't move boundaries just because we think that they might grow later. 10 years is a lot to project out accurately, so we just at least want to get down to as close to 0% as possible while maintaining compactness of each of the boundaries and utilizing some growth data if it's possible and if it's feasible at the time. Okay, next slide. Kent, do you want to talk about this part?
Yeah, I can. So yeah, thank you for being with us on that kind of a walk down, the redistricting process and then the current reality. Again, the focus for tonight and for this next meeting is for the council to determine some draft maps. And so for our workshop tonight, we're going to be sharing four springboard scenarios. And again, we call them springboards just because they're not draft maps. They're what we have created to try to solve this problem that's outlined, that 23% overall deviation with the 2020 census data on the current three wards in Pullman. And so we're going to show four springboards that actually do that reduction. You'll be able to see where the boundary lines are for each of these, where the changes are from the current boundaries. And then we will take some time and ask you to be thinking of these questions when you see this, these four scenarios. Because we want to make sure that we can do some adjustments or revisions to any of these that you would like to see and show you in real time how that changes the statistics and the shape of each of the wards and/or create some new scenarios for you based upon something you would like to see. We don't have any other scenarios in mind to share, so really, this is your time as a council to give us that input. So we're going to present the springboards and then we'll ask for your input. And if you want to see revisions, like I said, we can model those in real time and show you the impacts of your revisions. We'd like you to think about some of the maps that you like, once we present them. Which ones do you maybe not like right away and want to maybe eliminate some from even consideration of revisions? Are there some you would like to revise? Are there some that you like just the way they are? And then is there anything you'd like to be created? So please keep those questions in mind as Emma goes through the four springboards. And we can bring these up again at the end for the workshop and zoom in and give you more detail if you'd like to see that. But we'll present our four and then we'll go to that next phase.
Okay, so scenario one, different than the current. These are the four that we're presenting to you. So the goal of scenario one is to minimize the change areas. That was the ultimate goal. So you'll see that it'll be pretty similar to the current wards right now. And let's see, specific changes. So we're kind of looking at Highway 27 and South Grand Avenue as the dividing line between Ward 3 and Ward 1 because it is a good natural boundary and does help us even out the population between Ward 1 and Ward 3. And you'll see that when we look at the map. Also, there is a large census block that has a good amount of folks and maybe potential development on it. So bringing that into Ward 3 will also help even out development areas, but still staying within a good population deviation. And then expanding the, and I'm going to say certain things wrong because not from up there, so expanding the Petri, hopefully Petri, natural area land into Ward 2, and you'll see that as well. So if you want to click to the next slide. Okay, so let's start with Highway 27. You can see that we're pulling a lot of census blocks between, we're pulling them from Ward 1 into Ward 3. You can see that we're grabbing across the current existing ward lines are the dark blue lines. So we're grabbing more of those census blocks and bringing them into Ward 3. And then similarly, to the northeast, we are grabbing that area as more of like potential development, oh, sorry, between Wards 2 and 3. Yeah. And that also does help balance the population out a bit more there because 2 does have a good amount and 3 is severely under. And, okay, and then the other section, yep, right there, and that's where the Petri, hopefully Petri, natural area and some residences are. That helps not only make Ward 3 more contiguous, but again, balances population out more. And then we're grabbing more residences just north of there into Ward 1 because we can't keep taking so much from Ward 1. It does still need to even out at some point. So you'll see, yep, the overall deviation is 4.4%. We're in that sweet spot of under 5 is definitely a goal. Just getting down to 0 as best as possible, but we do really strive to be under 5%. The pros of this are low deviation, increase the compactness of each of the wards and distributing potential growth areas. So maybe the really large census block in Ward 1, right, just to the north of Ward 1, that's a really large census block, and then also the other development in, to the north of Ward 3. And the opportunities or ways we can improve, this is balance even more population between Wards 1 and 2 a bit more evenly. Because those are, Ward 3 is sitting at a really good spot at 0.2% and Ward 1 is still pretty large at 2.1% and Ward 2 is under the ideal population by 2.3%. It's not by that many people and certain census blocks doesn't mean larger ones mean more population and it doesn't mean larger ones mean less population. It's kind of a gamut. So bringing in, we have to be strategic, bringing in certain census blocks. Okay, so yeah, ruminating on scenario one while we continue talking about the others. So scenario 2, the main goal was to increase compactness more than the previous map. And you'll see a lot of the similar changes and rationale will kind of continue throughout all four maps. So I can talk more about them when we look at the map here. So you can see I grabbed more from the east side of Highway 27, down in the middle between Wards 1 and 3. Even that out a bit more to, you know, grab it alongside the highway. And with that, because so much was being taken from Ward 1, we had to compensate and kind of shift around the wards. So Ward 1 also lost the middle, kind of like isthmus area. It expanded the gap between the western edge of Ward 1 and Ward 2, where it began. So it lost that area. And Ward 3 again keeps that census block or development area just north of the golf course. So those are the main changes, as well as some campus changes between Ward 2 and 3, just in the middle. So those look like slight changes, but a lot of people reside in that area. So it did bring a lot of population into Ward 2. And in this particular situation, Ward 1 is now under by 4% and Ward 3 is now over by 4.6%. It brings us still in a reasonable deviation of 8.6. But again, we do want to get down to less than 5, ideally less than 3%. So one of the opportunities or ways we can improve this map are, we would have to compensate or we would have to compromise and lose some of the compactness in order to really even out the populations. So I wanted to throw this situation in here because if the goal is just to stay as compact as possible, let's try it out and see what happens. This is showing you what could happen. Okay, so next, scenario 3. The main goal was to show the large-scale changes. So the last map was to show most compact. This map is to show something different than your existing ward lines. And there's only so much you can make different, but this is definitely the, I would say, biggest change map. And you'll see that we grabbed a lot of the census blocks from north of Ward 1 into Ward 2. As an example of what happens if we grab that large census block, a lot of people live there, I'm pretty sure it's over 1,000 people, although that's a really large plot of land, it could be developed more. And to even out that population, we had to grab much, much more from Wards 3 and bring it into Ward 1 into the south end. So you'll see that kind of looks funky compared to the existing lines, and that's because we were taking so much from Ward 1. And same thing between Ward 1 and Ward 2, north where the isthmuses, we took more residential area there. And then we also took more campus space and brought it into Ward 3 because, again, many people live there. But we still kept the census block north of the golf course and brought it into Ward 3 because Ward 3 does need a lot more people in these situations. You'll see that it's still going to need to grab from a lot of different areas to compensate for it starting out much lower than the ideal population. So in this situation, we are sitting at a much better overall deviation. It's the best we've seen so far. It is a very different map, so kind of weigh what you're thinking. Do you want to go with a lot of different change? It is a lower deviation. Which areas do you like moving? Which areas do not? Are there areas we're not moving that you might want us to move? All those questions are totally valid. In this situation, Ward 3 is only 1% over the ideal population and I can't get it lower than that. So that might be the best that Ward 3 is going to do. But Ward 1 and Ward 2 are only 0.8 difference over and under the ideal population. So the opportunity in this map is to increase compactness. That's kind of its biggest downfall, is it does look kind of funny. So that is scenario 3. And then now moving on to scenario 4. The goal of this one was to have not only the minimal change, scenario 1 also had minimal changes as its goal. This scenario 4 is minimal change and lowest deviation. Can we get that deviation lower while not changing that much? So maybe a compromise in terms of current ward boundary lines. So our overall deviation is 2.2. Not a lot changed if you look at the map, considering the last couple maps. But we did lose some, in the isthmus area in Ward 1, we did have to bring more residences, residential areas into Ward 1 because we were losing a lot of Ward 1 into Ward 3 east of Highway 27. So other than that, the only other location was the Petri natural area and some residences there. Those are kind of the only three locations. And I did not grab the census block north of the golf course and bring it into 3. So here is a situation where that didn't. So here is a situation where that didn't happen if you wanted to see what the deviation would look like then. So Ward 3 in this situation is sitting 1.1 over the ideal population and Ward 1 is the lowest at just 1%. And again, the population, when you look at it, it's 122 people, 113, 9 people. Really, really low considering where we're starting at with the current ward boundaries. But it is a give and take situation trying to even that out even further because there's not a lot of one or two census blocks that can solve that issue. Okay, I'm gonna pass it back over to Kent.
Yeah, thanks, Emma. Yeah, we're at the end of our presentation for tonight. I just want to kind of revisit what the goal is for tonight. You know, draft map specifics that we've given you for springboards. And we would recommend that the council develop a draft plan that includes, you know, three to four draft maps that will be published in April for that public notice and comment. Again, the current timeline that we have outlines April 16th published date. That would be the first date that the draft plan could be published for the public hearing on the 26th because it has to be within a 10-day window having that public hearing after the posting of the draft plan. And then below, I went ahead and just re, actually put in writing what I mentioned earlier about those, both the draft map and the public hearing as well as final approval. So our last slide is just a review of the timeline. If we want to take it off of presentation mode, I would turn it back to Mr. Jenkins for next steps. But we are certainly ready to support the council in terms of other scenarios you would like to see, other revisions to these. One thing that's helpful, I think, you've seen four springboards. Sometimes the first discussion that you might want to have as a council is to see if there are one or two of these that you can agree to that you don't want to do any more work with. That narrows down the scope a little bit so that we can start doing some revisions for you differently.
So from the council's standpoint, you've seen four scenarios. Are there any preference or any comments you'd like to make on this? Sam will entertain the data and we'll send that to Flow Analytics. Okay, Nathan, who represents Ward 2?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thank you for your work on this flow. I was, I had a question regarding how much are we working with the county? As far as, and maybe this is something that Mike can answer also. You know, we have an election coming up pretty soon. I would say next, what, a couple of months or so, year or so? Is this going to be out, the new ward map? Is it going to be out in time for that election? Because if we go with larger changes, this is a lot of information for, you know, the elections department and so on. I'm not sure about all of the ins and outs, how smooth that would go. So I have a few questions, but I'll stop and let you answer there.
Sure, we've worked with the county discussing the timeline of what we're doing. And what's affecting you in this discussion is the ward maps for the city council. So this has nothing to do with other county-type elections, although the county may want to look at precincts at some point, but that's separate of the ward map.
Yeah, but they'd be running the elections for us, correct? Sending out all the... 23. Yeah, 23.
No one's up until 23.
The other thing I will mention is, you know, being the Ward 2 representative for quite a while now, it's always seemed kind of odd, the east side. So I'm looking at the different scenario maps. And as far as connectedness, it's always seemed odd that there was kind of a, almost a disconnected area on the east side of Ward 2. So I like the scenario with scenario 2. My question, however, is when you're coming up on scenario 3, has your data taken into account? Correct me if I'm wrong here, Mike. We have quite a few apartment areas that are a little outside of what I noticed with Flow Analytics analysis, but maybe I'm wrong. Outstate Route 27 before Kitzmiller Road. So that's a, that's quite a few apartment complexes right there. And I'm not sure Flow Analytics has, is that in the data?
It is, and we discussed this extensively with Flow. It's, the concern is when they did the census block, there wasn't.
Yeah.
Now there is.
Yeah.
But it's a census block. And we can't break it any smaller because it's a census block. So splitting census blocks is really problematic. But yeah, that was a long discussion we had with Kent and his team at Flow, probably longer than they wanted, but we definitely discussed it.
So the percentages do take into account that census block, correct? Or not?
Yeah, the census block does take the full census of who lives there now in those apartments. But it wasn't broken up into smaller blocks like you see in all these other places because at the time the census block was created, there was nothing out there. So they made it a large block.
Okay.
So probably in the next census, I bet we see that changed.
Okay, okay. Yeah, like I said, for me, number 3 is kind of, it's weird. It's kind of wonky. I know that's a technical word. So, you know, I just, as far as I'm concerned, I feel comfortable with the connection of scenario 2. However, I know there is a deviation that may be a little bit too extreme for some other ward council members. So, but I just kind of like the flow that's in there, you know, there on Flow Analytics. And then, yeah, that's my opinion. So thank you for your work.
Other comments? Eileen, who's at large?
In all sorts of ways. Yeah, I like 3 and 4. It's, one of the things in the comments on scenario 3 is it allows for similar population growth in Wards 1 and 2. And that's really the only one that we see the word growth mentioned. And I like that because I think they're, they know what they're doing and they can read the tea leaves. So I like that incorporates that growth. And 4 just really looks very harmonious. And so those are, that's another technical term. But yeah, I like 3 and 4.
Okay, Francis?
So first one question is our airport, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Is our airport all within the city limits or is part of the airport outside the city limits right now? Because on Flow's map, it's out, part of it's outside.
There's a small geographic disalignment between the city limits and the census boundaries, census blocks. We would include all of city limits when we create this discussion. There should be zero people living in any small discrepancy between those two geographies. Does that make sense?
Now, my understanding, and I didn't see it in the list of the items that go off as one of the things from the Secretary of State's website, is no census block can split any, any areas such as you can't split a hospital district, you can't split a city from the county, things like this. So if there's a census block that is in the city, that's in the county but also includes city limits, that's something that technically is going to need to change in order to meet the Secretary of State's guidelines.
Yeah, and I think Flow can probably confirm this for me, but the census block and how those are set are above our purview.
But that's just, that's one piece because you can't have a ballot for a census block that has two different things, where half the people can vote for it and half the people can't.
Right.
And that's so, as relates to the ballot. But that's aside from this thing right now. So that's just one for clear. So when I look at this, there's, as I think about our growth, our growth tends to be in the northwest, the southwest, and then the middle of the north is really where our growth areas are. The challenge is, is Ward 3 does not touch any of those. Ward 1 and 2 do, which means whatever, if we keep our existing setup with where structures are, we're going to quickly get back out of alignment. So in that context, I do like how in a number of them, you've taken the area north of the golf course and included that into Ward 3 because that is a growth area. So I like, because that helps provide some growth opportunities for Ward 3 to stay in, you know, in the same area. I personally, even though it's a big change for people, I like Ward, I like the scenario 3 where you actually take Ward 2 and wrap it over into that growth area on the northwest side of town because then Ward 1 only has the growth area on the southwest, not also on the northwest. So I, but that's, that's more looking toward the future. It's not a requirement as a part of this evaluation that we do, but it does mean we come back out of compliance earlier in that case. So I like where they take, they think about growth areas, not that it's required for now, but it'll help us in the future. I also, you know, our current Ward 1, of which I represent Ward 1, we do have that pinch point where we have Ward 1 that has a north side and a south side, and it really comes together. And I like when they've worked in order to kind of spread that apart so it's not so tight of a pinch point along those lines. So those are really the main things that I look at. You know, if I look at maps, I like 3 the best just because of the future, although it's going to be the hardest one for our community to understand because it's the biggest change. But I do like that when it relates to the future. And then I do like, I guess, 1 and 2 better than 4 after that.
Other comments? Becky, who represents Ward 2?
Yeah, I guess the only one that I'm not a fan of is scenario number 2. And that's simply because of the overall deviation. And it seems to me that, like for long-term planning, those kinds of things, it would be a better idea to have a lower overall deviation as we go forward because we could very quickly be out of that again. I kind of like 4 for some of the reasons Francis was mentioning in that it gets a really low overall deviation, but the change is not that drastic. So that's my opinion. And I think it's, this is so, so helpful. Thank you so much for your work.
Ann. Ann represents Ward 1?
Yes. I agree with what's been said here about map 3, scenario 3 particularly, in changing the dynamic of the growth area among the wards. I like that. I hadn't really looked at it that way. So I like 3 and 4 because it keeps the numbers, you know, the deviations are good. It evens out the populations, I think, the best between the three wards. So I like those two.
I'm the last one to weigh in on this.
And you're Ward 3?
And I'm Ward 3. My preference would probably be scenario 4. Again, with the lowest deviation and the least amount of change and the dividing line making more sense than certainly it does right now because 1 kind of cuts through Ward 3 right now and the dividing line doesn't make a lot of sense. But I like 4 because I think it's easier for people to understand and not as big of a change. I am, I'm looking at number 4 actually. That's my preference.
Okay. Sam, you've heard in Flow, you've heard comments. And as in anything in politics, there's not complete agreement. So just something they can take from there now and start working together and maybe come up with a plan that incorporates a couple of those.
That's my question to council, is there some maps that we can produce as a draft? Or are there some changes we can ask Flow to make that would, that you would prefer to produce as a draft which would open the comment period? Or are there some changes that you would like to see and come back before the council says these are the maps that we should produce as a draft?
Okay, Nathan?
Well, since I was a bit of an outlier on it, I would, after hearing everybody's comment, I would almost say 4 because of the reasons that have already been, as far as creating a draft, for the reasons that have already been mentioned, lowest deviation with the lowest change. So it seems like, while I understand what Francis was saying, it seems like such a monumental leap for people to suddenly get used to saying, I was in Ward 1, I'm in Ward 2 now. And that's a huge area for people to be doing. And I'd be worried about the community getting used to that big of a leap. So I would suggest 4 since it seems a majority of the council members enjoy that as well. But Francis?
I'm sorry. No, you're fine. And I think what you're looking for is, say, 3 maps that we would present to the public. Is that right? Or 2 or 3 maps as opposed to just 1 map?
That's the recommendation from the consultants. Yes, that we can produce a draft and the draft is not a final map. The draft is there to stimulate the public comment and changes are made to the draft or not made to the draft based on public comment. And then the final map that we produce would be the map that you would approve an ordinance to change the description of the ward boundaries in the city code.
Seems like they favor scenario 4 with 3 close behind.
And 3 actually has the lowest deviation, not 4. Just as a clarification. So what I'm proposing and kind of similar what Nathan was saying is if we had 1 map that had the least change and then 1 map that takes a look at this growth and that gives the opportunity for the public to really weigh in on, do they, do they just want to keep, they don't want to have to remember, what ward am I in now? Or they want to think about some change?
So is 2 maps appropriate rather than 3 or 4?
What the council decides is appropriate, but that was the recommendation. 3, 2 to 5 was the recommendation from our consultants. So, yes.
And I would just say, you know, back to the presentation, if I could, I'm sorry.
Oh, well, based on that, I was just going to recommend that we go with 2 maps, scenario 3 and scenario 4, based on that logic that one is showing quite a bit of change and the other one is not.
Okay, Nathan?
I would support that as well. I would also say if we want just 1 extra. I mean, Flow, I want to understand the logic behind giving us 4 maps and then asking for us to knock 1 off.
Yeah, I can give you, I can give you our thought on that. So, you know, the way these processes work in terms of receiving public input is that, you know, you really want to have some choices that might be a little bit different in terms of, in terms of just the way that the map was developed. So when we work to do springboards, we try to look at it from different angles to try to have folks make decisions. I mean, if every springboard looks relatively the same, there's really no decision point. And so... And so a way to get at decisions and get folks to really take a stand and tell us what they think is to develop some springboards. And the council determining the springboard, moving to draft maps that are a little different. So that's why, I guess, we're still open to the idea, if you wanted to go with Three, I think that's probably advisable. Two, the Two that you're showing, you know, are definitely, I think, different enough that there would be some choice there. But I do also want to say that as soon as draft maps are actually published, then we're on the clock to have a public hearing within 10 days of that publishing. So if you still would like to have more conversation about it, that's certainly something you could do. I don't know if you have another council meeting before our scheduled one, or excuse me, before April 16th, and that's when we said we would publish the draft maps by. But you can certainly think about it more and then come back, have more conversation, and say the draft map's done, too.
Well, then I would suggest putting in just scenario One. Scenario Two obviously has the most deviation, so if we're going to knock One off, even though it's kind of my favorite because it kind of just flows, but I'll take a hit for that, so.
Mike, did you have a comment on the next council meeting?
Sure, I just wanted to let the city council know, we will have a meeting on April 12th. However, that is also, we are meeting with the SWSU that night.
I think we can, too. I've heard pretty good consensus. So Three, Four, and One. How's that for council coming up with Three? Okay. I think that accomplishes what we tried to do tonight, correct? Good to see some head nods from Spokane. Way to go.
I have a question. Does that require? Again, we just need to make sure that we're not publishing these, so we won't publish these as draft maps until 10 days, within 10 days before that next, that next meeting, which will be a public hearing on April 16th, or, excuse me, April 26th.
Mike?
Yeah, just for point of clarification, Kendall, does council have to take action by way of motion to have us produce these three draft maps beginning April 16th to open the public comment period?
Yeah, and what I think I would suggest would be to do that on the 12th. That way, that way, we would actually publish them then on the 16th. I think there's such a big window right now that I think you might not want to do a motion to actually bring that back as draft maps. You don't necessarily have to do a motion for draft maps, it could just be an agreement as to what the council wants to move forward with, but a lot of our clients do actually do formal votes for that. I would think that you'd want to do that, you'd want to do that closer to the 16th, kind of the reveal date that we have set.
That being the case, if it pleases the council, I just conferred with Kendall, we'd like to bring that back to you as a consent agenda item on the 12th, since we've already presented on that.
Sounds fine.
And we are well on our way, very, very close to having all the public-facing items ready to go so we can unfold everything. We're not behind the eight ball, we're way ahead of schedule. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
And thank you very much for the presentation. We've come a long ways in terms of this. I remember when I was first mayor, we watched Professor Nick Lebrich work the wards and try and take care of the whole situation the best way he could as a professor of political science. And so now we've got the consultants coming in here to do this, so very good. Our next item is a couple of confirmations of appointment. The first one is a motion to confirm the appointment of Jordan Vorderburgen to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a term expiring December 31st of 2024.
Move to confirm. Second?
Moving second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next motion is to confirm the reappointment of Nathan Dean to the Civil Service Commission with a term expiring December 31st, 2024.
So moved?
Second.
Moving second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next comes the consent agenda. These items are considered routine in nature. And do I have a motion to read by title only?
So move.
Second?
Moving second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Kendall Freyze from McAlune Law is with us tonight. So Kendall, it's your turn.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. Your consent agenda consists of a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the regular meeting of March 15th, 2022, and approve them as submitted. A motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable, checks numbered 106, 109 through 106, 126. Electronic transfers, 53, 54, 831, and 837 through 842. Payroll direct deposits numbered 75187 through 75542, totaling $1,348,718.37. A motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable, checks numbered 106, 127 through 106, 194, totaling $163,211.21. A motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable, checks numbered 106, 195 through 106, 262, totaling $302,530.75. A motion to accept the Washington State Attorney General Sexual Assault Kit Initiative Grant and Resolution R-16-22, a resolution authorizing the submittal of a certified local government grant application to the Washington State Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation for the purpose of researching underrepresented populations in Pullman's history.
Any item the council would like offered discussion? Seeing none, the consent agenda consists of items One through Six. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So move.
Moving second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, we now move to the regular agenda tonight. First of all, as an ordinance that Mike Heston will be explaining to all of you, dealing with the emergency management plan. So Chief Mike Heston?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. So before I use the city ordinance, the city code that has the chief of police designated as disaster emergency coordinator for the city of Pullman. Over the last year, there's been some discussions between the mayor and the city administrator, fire department, and the police department on maybe that position that would be best suited under the fire department, and specifically the fire chief. So it would be the same responsibilities, and this is good timing, we're in the process of updating the comprehensive emergency plan as well. So the change would be only that the chief of police would be changed to the fire chief for the city code. So, and I also want to say, good job to Chief Jenkins for being the disaster coordinator all these years, he's done a great job, and there's going to be some big shoes to fill. So with that, I'll entertain any questions.
Any questions or comments? Nathan?
Maybe it's too far back in history, but is there a reason why police chief was disaster management, I mean, originally?
I knew you were going to ask that.
Hey, you know, then you'd be prepared, right?
You know, I don't know if Chief Jenkins has that answer or not, but...
I can remember, it seemed to be fallen on the police department to put together the comprehensive plan at one time. Right.
And typically, the police, like in the county, the sheriff gets designated all those kinds of emergency things anyway, so it's been typical. But with all the incident command training and all those classes, you know, it's been a, it's a pretty common progression in most cities, so.
Well, I think you'll do just fine.
Okay, I appreciate that, Nathan.
Any other comments? Do I hear a motion on this ordinance?
Move to adopt ordinance 22-8. Second?
Kendall, would you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 22-8, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Pullman, Whitman County, Washington, amending Pullman City Code Sections 1.36.020, 1.37.020, and 8.90.010. An ordinance number is 18-25, 2018, 18-7, 2018, 04-10, 2004, 04-10, Section 2, 2004, 01-26, Section 2, 2001, and 82-31, 1982, and other matters properly related thereto.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we know that both Chief Jenkins and Chief Heston work very well together, and we obviously saw that during several emergencies that we've already been through here. So, thank you again. I don't know if that was part of his agreement, but anyway. Item number two is a resolution authorizing the execution of agreement between the city of Pullman and Axon Enterprises. So Gary Jenkins, the police chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. The Pullman Police Department has carried body-worn cameras since 2012, and we've been purchasing those cameras from what used to be called Taser International, and they've since changed their name to Axon Enterprises. It also includes cloud storage and video management. We also purchase Tasers from Axon. In 2015, I'm sorry, in 2017, we added to our camera fleet in-car cameras, and that includes two cameras in each vehicle, one that faces out the front windshield and one that faces in the rear seat for when we transport someone. The original agreement with Axon was a five-year agreement that began in 2017 that expires at the end of May of this year. Axon will not have new cameras available for us until February of 2023, and so this agreement is proposed to initiate at that time, in February of 2023, for a five-year period. Between the time that our contract expires this year and that contract begins, Axon is going to cover that gap and cover all of our hardware and software with support and warranties because they do not have the cameras ready. And so they are, they are offering that time period essentially for free. So staff asked that you adopt the resolution that will authorize us to sign this five-year agreement for in-car cameras.
Any comments or questions? We know Gary and the Pullman Police Department was one of the first to adopt body-worn cameras in the state of Washington and did a fantastic job in terms of transparency, and we thank you for that leadership. Nathan?
You took the words right out of my mouth.
I was hoping I would.
You proactive leadership, you were the first, so.
And for the cars, they have just been fantastic in terms of transparency, so. Yes, Ann?
Is there a change in cost with the new contract in February?
I believe it is a little bit higher than our previous five-year contract, and that's just the passage of time and the cost of product.
Thank you.
We also have another story coming up tonight about inflation and also the cost of doing business, so that's coming up next. Any other questions? Do I hear a motion on this resolution?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Moving second. Kendall?
Resolution number R-17-22, a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement between the city of Pullman and Axon Enterprise, Inc., for the purpose of securing in-car cameras and related accessories and equipment.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number Three tonight is a resolution accepting the bid for an MNO expansion grading and delivery of said contract. We have our city engineer, Kara Haley, with us tonight.
Great, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. The action before you is a resolution accepting the low bid for the MNO expansion grading 2022 project. As seen on your screen, the project is located in the northwest quadrant of the city, and the second figure lays out for you a little bit closer where the approximate work boundary is located. It's shown as the red shaded area. The project is located along the east side of Guy Street and directly across the street from the city's existing maintenance and operations facility. To the immediate northwest of the site is the wastewater treatment plant. So, excuse me. This project was previously approved through the city's capital improvement program process, and it will implement a concept that has been discussed for over a decade. It started with the acquisition of private property by the city in 2008 and 2009. On this slide, you can see the general result of this effort. The red lines represent what is now city-owned property or public right-of-way. This project does include work within three now-city-owned property boundaries, which are labeled on the screen. And it also includes work specifically within the Guy Street right-of-way. Let's see. So the gray lines that are shown on your screen represent two-foot existing contours. So you can see that the existing site is a, basically a hilly area. The two yellow elevations that are shown on the screen show you that there's about a 50-foot change in elevation between the east side of the site and the west side of the site. And then, I guess, please make note of this arrow that just popped up on the screen. I'm going to show a photo on the next page, and it will be directed in the orientation that the arrow is shown. So here's this figure, this was pulled from Google Earth, but it does represent conditions in the last year. You can see northwest Guy Street on the right side of the photo, the existing MNO facilities are to the right. The wastewater treatment plant would be immediately behind us, and then the area that would be developed is this hillside, grassy, relatively undeveloped area presently. So the primary purpose of this project is to grade out the existing hillside to provide an open level space for future development and expansion of city MNO facilities. To do this will require approximately 90,000 cubic yards of earthwork operations. The black lines that popped up on your screen a bit ago are the proposed two-foot contours for the design. Roughly half of the site will require excavation to achieve the proposed design grades, and then that cut material will be moved over to the other half of the site and compacted as fill material. The design, or I guess this approach, is strategic to essentially balance out the site and minimize the need for importing any fill or basically exporting any excess fill off the site or having to haul and dispose of it, which can be relatively costly. The grading accounts for construction of two access roads. I'll point them out a little closer on the next slide, but they are on the south and north side of that, basically that balanced site area. And there's also some minor grading on the far south side of the site to basically develop a combination stormwater detention treatment pond and then to provide access to that pond for maintenance purposes. So this slide gives you a much better look at what the site will look like after grading is completed and restoration has taken place. I do want to point out that the design considers this work somewhat of a Phase One with future phases necessary to continue building out the site in support of future development activities and needs. Staff has value engineered the design for this project as best as possible to minimize necessary work at this particular phase while also ensuring compliance with local design standards and site development requirements. So on the screen, the blue hatch, it's a gravel hatch up there, and it does represent gravel restoration. And you can see that the leveled-out area that would be created by this project is essentially 2.6 acres. This phase does propose putting down gravel surfacing for that area at this time. And then the gravel access roads on the south side are also a majority gravel, although right at the entrance points to Guy Street, we do have some proposed asphalt at those locations. Those are shown in the magenta kind of hatch shading area. Let's see. You'll also see magenta hatch right along the frontage of the property, so basically north is actually facing left on your screen, but it would be on the east side of Guy Street. And that's essentially a proposed eight-foot wide asphalt path. There is some green shown up on the screen, and that represents retaining wall that would be roughly four to five feet high. And then the orange hatching represents concrete sidewalk and ADA ramps kind of right at the entrance locations. Let's see. You might have noticed on the photo that I showed you of the existing conditions that there is no existing sidewalk along either side of Guy Street, so this is a pretty significant improvement, and it is in line with the city's complete streets policy. Because the new path will replace what is existing ditch right now, which captures all of the drainage coming off of this hillside, basically all the way up to Clifford Street, there is some storm drain infrastructure that would be necessary within the public right-of-way to capture and convey that drainage. The project will also install stormwater, sanitary sewer, and water utilities up to the site for future connection or extension. They're a little harder to see on the screen, but they're represented by the darker, the thick darker white or darker black lines, excuse me. A combination stormwater detention and treatment pond will be constructed on the south end of the site, and it's designed to accommodate not only the immediate changes resulting from this phase of development at this location, but also future development. This could include converting much of the gravelled area to impervious surfacing, so possibly paving the access roads all the way up to the site, putting buildings on the site with roofs, which are impervious surfacing. So that has been considered at this stage. Accounting for this stormwater infrastructure... Accounting for this stormwater infrastructure and these utility stubs now prevents unnecessary and costly rework in the future. So bids for this project were open on March 8th of this year, and we received three bid proposals. The low bidder was La Riviere, Inc., at just over $2 million. This is approximately 7.5% higher than the engineer's estimate of roughly 1.87 million. And then, we did receive two other bids, they were within $25,000 of each other, and they were roughly 9% above the low bid. A bid summary was provided in the council packet for reference if anyone wants to dive into those numbers closer. And overall, the bid results were actually quite favorable. As a good rule of thumb, it's usually considered pretty successful if the engineer's estimate's within 10% of the low bid. In addition, as was the case here, it's ideal if the various bids are fairly close to each other, which would indicate quality competition, and would show that the bids are reasonable and fair, given the scope of work that's specified in the contract documents. For this project, the larger topic of discussion is the discrepancy between the low bid and the budgeted amount, which was 1.25 million. There are several reasons attributable to this. The first Mayor Johnson mentioned would be high construction cost inflation and unprecedented material price increases since development of the budget in 2020. City staff did actually try to account for this, our engineer's estimate was finalized on February 11th, which was basically the day that we advertised this project, and we did increase unit prices in the engineer's estimate to reflect this, and that's shown by our estimate being somewhat within reason to the low bid. But one factor that was not predicted was the February 24th invasion of Ukraine by Russia, and the situation is certainly affecting material and fuel costs. We do have much of the earthwork taking place on-site, but that still takes hauling back and forth and time and materials and fuel and whatnot, and this has led to further price escalations even during the short period of time between advertising the project and the bid opening. So also during preparation of the budget in 2020, staff underestimated the extent of work that would be required for on-site stormwater infrastructure and also necessary frontage improvements, which I discussed pretty well on the last, or a couple slides back. Excuse me. If you look at the pie chart that's shown on this screen, you can see that those features make up roughly 22% and 25% of the total low bid cost. The other, well, the big chunk is the basic site development, which is all that earthwork, restoration, putting back gravel, stabilizing the slopes that remain, that sort of work. Let's see. Oh, I just also want to add, you know, at the time that the budget was developed, engineering staff didn't have a real detailed design to work off of. It can be challenging sometimes, especially two years out, to capture all of the necessary elements that need to go into a project, especially when significant design and field work may or may not have taken place. Let's see. So staff recommends awarding the project to the low bidder for several reasons. As I mentioned before, we did have favorable bid results, and we believe the low bid is fair and reasonable. Second, the project was bid at an ideal time, and before contractors are basically booked up for the summer and the construction season. We do not believe that rebidding in a couple of months will result in a lower price. Rebidding the project would also require re-scoping of the proposed work, and staff has value engineered this design to the extent possible, carefully maximizing necessary work while also balancing project needs and objectives, development requirements and design standards, and existing site constraints and conditions. Perhaps most importantly, though, the city plans to use this site for future expansion of the MNO division facilities, and this includes constructing a decant facility by the end of 2023. So the proposed decant facility will be constructed using funds from an already active Department of Ecology grant through the Stormwater Financial Assistance Program, and completion of the project we're talking about tonight is critical to assuring that that decant facility can be constructed by the end of next year and before the stipulated end date of that grant, which is December 31st of 2023. I do want to note that construction of the city's new fuel island, I guess it was new in 2018, displaced the old decant facility, and we've been making do without it since, but that can't continue. If the decant facility is not constructed by the end of next year, the city will essentially lose $525,000 worth of grant funding, and the state will most likely ultimately require us to construct that decant facility anyways, with or without the grant funding. So I do also want to point out that staff has considered potential for constructing the decant facility on the existing MNO site, but deemed it infeasible due to lack of available space outside the floodplain. And then, lastly, completion of this project will create a significant amount of readily available additional space for other potential MNO expansion needs, such as MNO admin office space or biosolid storage. We are reaching capacity of our existing biosolids storage area, and so that is going to need to be addressed in the near future. And then, this last slide, I really just throw it up there to give you a little bit better concept about the scale of the site that we're talking about developing. We have a consultant right now who's working on designing the decant facility, it's still in the works, but based on the last rendition that we saw, they are proposing that that structure in that facility be roughly 77 feet long by 44 feet wide. I did scale that out on this figure, and I placed it arbitrarily on the site, it doesn't mean it is going to end up in that location, but it does give you reference as to kind of what sort of size that facility is talking about, and showing you that we still have a lot of other area up at that site after this to account for other needs. So to make up the difference between the low bid and the budgeted amount, staff proposes to use a combination of utility fund reserves and delaying or using excess budget from other utility fund capital projects from the 2022 budget. We would follow up with a budget amendment at the end of the year, and with that, staff recommends that council adopt the prepared resolution accepting the low bid of La Riviere, Inc. I would happily take any questions at this time.
Any questions? Nathan, is that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So I have no arguments with La Riviere or anything. I did have a question, though, regarding access, as I'm looking at the map, is this going to cause a lot of challenges for, I know Pullman Transit is down there, and then also SYG Nursery? And then, as I understand it, there's quite a few people along Clifford who enjoy that view, I'm not sure if there's noise or so on, I remember this project from CIP, but just was wondering if you could answer some of that.
Yeah, I can attempt to answer some of those questions, so let me see if I can get my pointer on here. Okay, so, yeah, Clifford Street is, actually, it's quite a ways up to the top of the screen. It's a little harder to see on the screen because you have all these design and existing contours. We are talking about significant elevation change even beyond where our site ends, so our grading has kind of maximized the slightly gentler hillside slope, and then you do steepen out the area that you need to fill on the side closest to Guy Street, and then the area that you need to cut on the far side. But beyond that point, you actually have relatively steep terrain all the way up to Clifford Street, so we're talking about significant elevation change, so I would guess that most of the residents up there can see much of this hillside now, and then they will see it when it gets leveled out some. There's a lot of vegetation in this existing area, we were also particular about where we ended the site limits to protect much of that vegetation and not disturb a majority of that, so that potentially acts as somewhat of a buffer as well. There was an environmental checklist process that was completed on this project, it's also gone through site plan review, so a lot of the aspects that would be associated with that have been addressed and considered. And then, I guess you asked about access off of transit in that piece, so actually, one of the reasons that this site is advantageous for expanding our MNO expansion facilities is because it is directly adjacent to the existing facility, so as we talk about potentially needing a biosolid storage, we do talk about needing to haul across Guy Street for those purposes, right, correct? But we're saving a lot in fuel costs and time in the long term by not having to haul significantly further distances. So transit comes out right here, I believe, and they loop around this area for the most part. Other than our city facilities at this point, you know, those vehicles, biosolid storage, they're going to haul occasionally, and there'll be a period of time where they haul all of that material off to be land-applied, that would be like a heavy period of time in which there might be trucks entering and exiting, we could set out signs so that the public's aware that that would be taking place. I think on a day-to-day basis, we're not going to see huge significant increases in traffic as a result of the operations and facilities. Some of the folks might just turn into the right rather than turning to the left, so I don't know that we're going to see, you know, double the traffic capacity and that sort of thing, but it's a very good question, and I think one of the nice things here is it is a long stretch in a straight road, so we don't have vehicles pulling out right before sharp corners and things where it would be a safety risk.
I appreciate it, I had just been wondering also on down the line for SYG, and so it sounds like you answered that, yeah.
That's a great question.
Thanks.
Any other questions? If not, do I hear a motion on this resolution?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Moving second, Kendall?
Resolution number R-18-22, a resolution accepting the bid of La Riviere, Inc., for MNO expansion grading 2022, and authorizing execution and delivery of the contract for said project.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I think we also should, at this point, thank Mark Workman, who was our Public Works Director at one time, and Kevin Gardis, that had the foresight to purchase this property, and there's three council members that are on this council today that were here when we, when Mark made the proposal that we needed to have room to expand, because so many other city facilities in other cities did not see that foresight, and I want to thank Mark Workman for that, who came on board. Under new business tonight, Dee Stiles has something for us, and you have something in front of you, I think it's the LTAC agreement, so.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, council. What you have before you is a recommendation from the Lodging Tax Advisory Commission. The Washington State University Edward R. Merrell College of Communications submitted a grant application to the Lodging Tax Advisory Commission for the 46th Merrell Symposium. The Lodging Tax Advisory Commission met on March 8th. Each commissioner filled out an independent scoring sheet prior to the LTAC meeting with a cumulative score of 87%. A motion was made by Jackie Alvarez and seconded by PJ Sanchez to recommend the city council approve by motion to award the Edward R. Merrell College of Communication $2,000 of LTAC money as requested.
Any questions on this? This is not new, I mean, they've done this about every year, as far as I can recall that we've had this LTAC proposal. So we're looking tonight for a motion from the council to approve this application.
I move to approve the allocation of $2,000 of LTAC money for the Merrell, WSU Merrell Symposium?
Correct.
Second.
Do I hear, you have a second from Becky? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any other new business to come before the council tonight? Seeing none, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Move in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
That was the better.